I think we're going to. And we can, they do. And I just want to say we are two board members down. They should be coming. There's just something going on with Saul Mills. Or this, yeah.
Yeah.
So they are delayed. They should be here. And as I said before, I don't know if you've heard, we have a problem with our audio tonight also due to the Saul Mill. So, but minutes will be available online. Okay, we are picking up and we will be with you all in just one minute. Just a little bit of business. We are now up to consent agenda. And I need a motion to drop tonight's consent agenda for personnel, special services, and business. And a second.
A second.
Any comments or any favor? Thank you very much. And now back to you. We have our second special report of the evening. And that is our curriculum conversation. And we are joined here by chairs and teachers and a couple of high school students that are going to talk about performance assessment. And I will turn it over to Superintendent.
Yep. I'm not going to speak for a long time because I want to get to you all as soon as possible. But I had a chance to see this presentation in its full form when it was presented to the Tri-Space Consortium, which is a consortium of over 100 suburban school districts in New York, Connecticut, and New Jersey, who are considered the highest performing school districts in the country. And I was very proud to sit in the audience and watch you, to know how great Byron Hills is in many ways, but also to show the great work that you were doing. And you were very convinced it would both be great to have you tonight. Without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Colsonak.
Thanks, Dr. Donkey. And also they presented, this group, both groups presented to the entire faculty to talk about the work of performance assessments and along with our students. And I'm going to have everyone introduce themselves. And I'll give an overview of our work on performance assessments. And we'll just jump right into the conversation. So we'll just start here. If you could say who you are and what you teach.
Nicole, how we're the second group.
Billy Lee's second group.
I'm the math specialist.
Well, great job.
Sophia Jamon Jr.
Ariana Chubak Jr.
Jen Layder on the social studies chair. And I teach global 10th and eighth grade history.
Karen Fallon, I teach 9th and 10th grade global history.
Michael Lernas, 10th grade global history.
Tom Angello, 9th and 10th grade global history.
So thank you. We're all really excited to have you here tonight. And I do want to thank you for the work you've been doing on behalf of the district and your students on performance assessments. They've been engaged in writing performance assessments, studying about them for the past two years. It's a long endeavor. And not that all performance assessments take that long, but there's a lot of learning you're going to hear about the impact it has, not just for this assessment at the end, but how it really informs the way you think and the impact it has on kids. We've been engaged in performance assessment work for about a decade in the district. And it was really initially a response to two things. One is the low-level state assessments, that we felt that there's more to learn than the recall and procedural knowledge that the tests were asking us to do. And second, we felt as though there's also more to learning than just content as well as the lifelong learning skills. In that we wanted students to engage more deeply with content, that we didn't feel traditional tests or standardized tests allowed for them. So what you'll hear tonight is how a performance assessment does what we intended to do to engage students deeply into understanding the content in ways that you just can't test in traditional tests. So that's what we'll explore. I did give you each of their presentations in your packet so you can reference those. You also have our district definition of performance assessments, which in short is a task that measures enduring understanding through the application of skills and transfer of knowledge. That's a definition we've been working with for many years in the district. I think you'll hear some of that tonight. And their examples and how it's not only to assess learning, but to really, as an instructional tool, to engage kids in what enduring classes. So with that, I just want to jump in. We have two teams, our elementary team who worked on a performance assessment and our high school team. So this presentation isn't meant to be linear. We're sort of going to jump right in. And feel free to jump in and ask questions as well. So I do want to start with this. And essentially, our performance tasks generally have an overarching essential question that guides the task as well as the learning for that unit. So could each of the teams tell us what their essential question was and why it's important to your content area? Elementary, you want to start?
So our essential question is, what does it mean to make a difference? And going a little deeper than that, how can I, or the children saying, how can I make a difference in understanding the impact it has in my classroom, in my school, and then in my community? And along with that, then, the next step would be, how does making a difference create a chain of kind actions? And so this assessment was chosen for a variety of reasons. One is that it fits into our curriculum that is being taught in our school right now, which is PBIS, which is the Performance Behavior Intervention Support System, which is our character education system. And so we had something already in place. And so we wanted to, because we chose this performance assessment, it is that it fit right into what we were doing in our school. And we wanted to delve deeper into it.
It also tied in with social studies curriculum, which is to impact through our classroom, your school, and your community can make a difference in that respect. So it tied into a social curriculum.
Do you tie it to other curricular areas as well? Is this simply social studies and character education?
No, so in our rubric, when we developed the rubric, the five-point rubric, and four of them deal with writing and one is social studies.
Let's shift over to social studies.
Yes, so ours was a social studies assessment. And the course we all teach in common is global history in the 10th grade. It's a modern world history course, which begins in the year 1750. So we thought about, what's a question that can really frame almost our entire course? And where we landed was the question of can tradition and modernization coexist? We thought about the world we live in today and all of the conflict. We see these two forces playing out. And we really thought that, you know, starting in the year 1750 going forward, that's really been the global movement, this push and pull between traditional and modern forces. And so for that reason, we thought it could really not only guide a really engaging performance task, but it also could give a nice umbrella question to the course and bring some alignment to what we teach the kids all year long.
So let me ask you what the outcomes are. What are you looking for in students if they engage successfully with this question?
So what we wanted the kids to do in this particular instance is as a culminating task, is we had them choose a specific modern day issue of their choosing, where they saw the forces of tradition and modernization coming into some sort of conflict. And those ranged from things like the issues with ISIS today to different traditional cultures being diminished by perhaps social media or other modern forces and the role of technology. And the kids could pick what they're interested in. And we wanted them to really understand where tradition and modernization played a role in that and then analyze that conflict we saw between the two forces.
So we had this bigger overarching question and theme to sort of engage with content. So let's talk about the task you created, which is sort of the final product. So I'm wondering, what did students have to do to demonstrate their understanding of the nuances of that question?
Sure. So the ultimate assessment that they came up with was a Google+ page. And that's essentially Google's version of a Facebook page. It's a little bit more controlled because it's linked to their Byron Hills account. So we can control the access to the wider internet. But essentially, just like you would post to a Facebook page, we asked the students to find articles, videos, pictures, political cartoons that dealt with their topic and really demonstrated the way that their topic engaged with the idea of modernization and tradition. And you can actually see the students' presentations there. So they had to post these articles and images to their Facebook page. And they had to write a little analysis for each one. And then once they finished doing this, this was good because it allowed the other students to actually comment on the classroom's pictures, the way that you would engage on social media. So two students who might be doing a similar topic could actually converse about the articles and get immediate feedback from their classmates on their research as they were going along. And then at the end, once they did all this research, what we asked them to do was make a brief, two-minute video of themselves grappling and analyzing that question. Based on my case study, do I believe modernization and tradition can coexist in our world today?
It's just a, sorry, go ahead. The, I think one of the things that we really enjoyed, sort of unintended outcome, was the piece where the kids were actually able to comment on the actual page with respect to what the other students had put up there. Time and time again, you know, I went back to really the kids' comments and thought that those comments were more germane, really, to the task at hand than perhaps even anything that we might have been writing down and assessing them on. So it was really great to see the, their peers, you know, really assessing them. And really it was a self-assessment at first, and then it was a peer assessment. Eventually, they got our assessment, probably thinking that our assessment might not amount as important as the assessment that was given to them in the individual assessment by, you know, by the peers and, you know, and what they, you know, their self-assessment as well.
So I'm wondering if we have to teach students how to react and respond to other comments? Is there learning involved in that? And how do you, how do you do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely. We really tried to model that and practice that because what we wanted the kids to do was engage in the content of what was being presented as well. So not just make a value to the comments, but really think about the content that was being presented. What did they think about it? How did it relate to perhaps their own understanding? And then ultimately, the owners of the page, the students responded back to. So there was this sort of ownership that this is my, my, my audience is my classmates. And I'm responsible for sort of engaging back with them and attracting.
Was there an understanding on how lengthy these comments should be or how brief they must be?
Yeah, I mean, really sort of following social media practices. Short, it's a, yeah.
140 characters.
We wanted to, though, we did want it to be substantive. We wanted the comment. We were looking for evidence that the person who commented had spent time reading the article or watching the video. We were looking for, in their comments, something substantive. They were not, that they, they had reacted to it. Another thing that we required was they had to visit multiple pages. So it was also our way, we had a very long list of many modern and traditional conflicts. And the hope being that if they come across two or three that they at least find interesting, we kind of broaden their goal perspective even a little bit. And in a way that is hard to do in a more traditional classroom setting. You can't cover 35 different areas in a classroom, but they could easily take some time to look at kind of service levels. And I think when the girls are talking, they'll really focus on the idea of like the retention and how when you give them ownership of the topic, how much more a student really remembers of what they learned and have kind of an understanding of, maybe even a new solution they can try to come up with.
So I actually have a question about this. So I would think that most of this work then happens outside the classroom, right? Sort of on their own and then.
We, we gave them, we definitely spent the time in class going through the logistics of how to post and what to post. We use the, our library media specialists, letting them go in the high school to help them curate a list of good versus bad websites. We have so many resources that go through the library as far as journals and primary sources that she really wants to create value to us. But once, I would say, well, it's maybe two days we spent in the class. The rest of it was, was outside the class. And one of the comments that we got back from the kids was that, though it was, it was time pursuing it in a different way, they found themselves doing what they always do, which is kind of searching the internet. They were doing it more of a purpose. And they found that they liked that more. They were looking for information and then kind of digesting it. And maybe just studying a traditional book or, or reading a section out of a textbook, reading a newspaper article. Right? They had a variety of things to look for. We required images, we required even videos. We had some kids that had CNN, maybe they'd done a feature story on it. They would post that video, which is two or three minutes long, but provided the same information that maybe a longer article might provide to them.
And the thing that was also good about using the Google+ page is that they could do it a little bit at a time. It wasn't like writing a giant research paper where you sit down for hours and hours and sift through all of this information. They're doing, as Tom said, they're, they're on the internet constantly. They could go find one, two articles a night and throw it up on their page. And then they're just writing a short analysis of that one article. But they did that for 10 different sources. So it was a lot of work and a lot of analytical, real work, but it didn't necessarily feel as onerous as a massive paper. But then at the end, we really asked them to pull it together and really make sense that it synthesized that information.
So the children are being evaluated on their body of work, but also their comments to other people's work as well.
Yes.
Did they learn more from the project or from the critiquing of other people's projects?
We'll look to the.
I feel like I learned kind of equally because when I was doing the process, I was more focused on the information than I was really for like reading an article for traditional papers because I felt like I needed to know more in order to prove to my classmates that I'm not unintelligent. And I thought that going through other people's Google+ pages was really interesting too, because I saw what they had to say about it. And I kind of took their opinions. Because I went on most of my friends' pages, so I actually cared about their opinion. Unlike someone, like it's a writing journalist who wrote an article. I don't really.
GPS signal lost.
Pretty much about their theme, but which is probably not the best thing. But I found that like I retained more of the information that was there.
Yeah, what was it, sorry. What was interesting is that you also found the dialogue. They were giving back on what the trouble was. So really it wasn't just one individual comment or critique, but other kids that were coming onto, you know, onto the page were also critiquing what other kids, you know. And there's a thread of conversation really that started to take place just from the critiquing itself, which is interesting.
For the people who are commenting on your work, people that you knew already, or is it just friends commenting on their friend stuff? Or was it broader conversation? And that's question one. And question two is, did any of this spark any hallway or lunchtime conversation with people following up on the, hey, you put a comment on my page, and what's.
Yeah, like actually, some of my close friends commented on some of the things that I did. And I also got some teachers and I even got a guidance counselor commented on one of my articles. And yeah, so it was kind of interesting to see like, wow, all these people are seeing my work. Yeah, and for the hallway conversation, like you would see, like when, after you read someone's stuff, we, like I read one of my friend's pages. And I was like, wow, this really messed up after class. I was like, what, what is that? Does that actually happen? And like, she spoke to me and she actually explained to me about the project. And I was like, wow, that's interesting.
Could I ask, now, if you were assigned a topic, you weren't able to choose a topic that would allow you to explore that question about traditional modernization, could you each tell us what you chose to study and why you chose that?
I originally, I know what you, what this topic was. I wanted to do child bribes in India because I was more familiar with that topic. But I talked to this person about it and she kind of encouraged me to do this. And this is bribery in India. Basically, what it is, is when a woman gets married to a man, she gives dowry, which is like money and land and a lot of the things that she owns. So basically, when a man is dissatisfied with the amount of dowry she brings to the table, she, he attempts to set her on fire and tries to kill her to try to get a new wife.
And I did gender equality in India because I know that like all around the world, people struggle with gender equality. And there's a disparity between women and all the places. But I was also interested in like the Middle East region. And I just decided to go with India.
So what are you thinking about your topics now? What have you learned from engaging in this program?
I obviously learned a lot about the topic itself, not itself. But I learned how to use a different database that I never obviously used before. And I got to shine light on a topic that no one really knew about before. So I thought that was meaningful.
I learned how complicated the situation is in gender equality because there are groups of women that do fight for equality, but they're also kind of held back from their traditions, by their traditions because there's like festivals where it's like only men can go out in the streets. And they, these women who are like super pro-equality don't even let their, the girl children go out in the streets because they're just so like held back by their traditions. At the same time, they do fight for equality, which is interesting to see. And you can just kind of compare it to gender equality situations all around the world.
When did you do this task, remember?
We did this, I want to say, end of May.
This is last year. You remember last year.
Yeah, we kind of carried it out until the end of the year. Yeah.
That says something that you remember it.
Yeah.
Because it seems like, in a way, if you tie both of these projects together, they have a lot of impact by touching, you know, a lot of people with the work that you did, not just handing out these papers, getting a grade back, but so much feedback from, you know, so many different folks. And then in 100 Acts of Kindness, when my son was in second grade last year, you know, he still, he still would remember it to this day because he felt like he had an impact when he sent a letter to someone in his family, to his grandparent. Oh, you know, I want you to make a difference too. Here's how you can make a difference. And then he gets the letter back, so it kind of registers, oh, I can actually make a difference in this world and I can do something to, you know, to change behavior, you know, for somebody else. And it's a, it's a learning lesson. Second, my question would be, how, what do you think the applicability is more broadly in elementary school and then up through high school?
Well, last year was a year we kind of dabbled in it. And so we were just going within the school and our home community. But we are branching out, if that's the question. Like this year, we're making train schedules for seniors for holiday time. And we're writing about how we can make a difference. And we hope this brings a smile to your face and cross the charity with the school, with the PCFA, and get kids more involved in it. So we're trying to branch out and get more broader and not just, you know, too specific.
So part of the reason we chose this performance assessment design is because we knew that it could spread through the entire year and ongoing years and that it was meaningful. And we valued, we valued being able to make a difference in someone else's life. And so our actual performance assessment is embedded in that. So the performance assessment is the letter that is written, that Mr. Lee was just talking about. The letter is the assessment that is, that the children write to somebody outside in the community saying how they've made a difference in people's lives. And we hope to inspire you to make a difference. And then that those people out in the community will write back, hopefully, and will have made a difference in somebody else's life. So if the children are more aware that they were able to actually inspire somebody else to make a difference.
I think that's what's so powerful about the performance stuff and as you were saying, is the response back, the feedback they get. You know, they could write a letter and it's no response back to them. They don't feel like they've truly made a difference. But having that audience and hearing from them and sort of going to the place now that they're going to teach them, to the seniors, and having that to us because we want the kids to know, you know, you've done it. You can. They do it to inspire others.
And the learning experience from this is that when you see that you can create this sense of excitement with this particular project, it kind of makes you, it creates the idea that there are other things that you could possibly do. And sort of use the same principles and create that level of excitement in other different contexts.
One thing in the real life, I'm sure, is doing it when others aren't seeing it either. You know, not just the praise itself, but just because it's the right thing to do. So that's been, and you really got that one as well.
Yeah, Nicole, they've told me stories about students coming in from the playground and saying that, you know, we know who was looking, this one was nice to meet, or, you know, something like that. So, you know, even those little bits of making a difference are important at this level. And then it's interesting you made a connection because it does kind of connect to the phenomenon of the high school that making a difference in other people's lives.
And it really speaks of the evolution of, really, not getting too grandiose, our society, it used to be, incidentally, your assessment to your teacher. Like you said, you get a grade, you go home and you compare it to, you know, your siblings. And, and with the advent of the internet and group think and of course, the social media, which is sort of driving everything, it's really about the impact that you can have on others and connecting and persuading. And it's no longer just an individual thing. And I, you know, we're not going to go back in the other direction. It's, it's changed forever. So it's, it's nice that this is really connecting with, you know, what everybody already knows about Facebook, good and bad.
And I think one of the great things about the PATTY work, I mean, not even looking at our project specifically, but the process that you have to go through to create an assessment and learning about how to give an assessment that doesn't just assess what you've already learned, but that actually creates and produces learning and thinking. Those ideas are so applicable to almost any assessment. And for me especially, you know, it's, it's really made me start to go back and question, you know, why am I giving a unit test at the end of a unit? And for me, it was such an aha moment when I was at this training. And it's, we kind of compared it to a doctor, right? The doctor comes to the scene and then they pronounce someone already dead at the scene. When you're giving an assessment after the fact, there's nothing we can do about that now. That's kind of what we're doing when we give, you know, we have kids write this final essay, this final test, and we spend hours writing comments and feedback. And they can't do anything without feedback. It's done. But this type of assessment, even if we implemented on a smaller scale into our classroom, it's great. They get the feedback. So for example, one of the things that I did in not just a regular unit is I was giving them a big written assessment. And I gave them a similar question the week before and said, here's the rubric they're going to be graded on next week. Write a similar assignment, look at the rubric, use the same rubric. Let's just grade it. And I didn't grade it for a grade. We got feedback. We spent a day critiquing, evaluating the rubric. They got the feedback and we could use it and apply it. So I think, and that was the PATTY process. And I think taking the process and applying it in little bits is really something that could dynamically change the way students think about learning and we think about teaching it. Every, it doesn't have to be this massive year-long project either.
So what kind of challenges that for teachers to kind of evolve the way that you're assessing the kids and what you're going to do? This has to be quite a challenge.
Doesn't begin with the New York State assessment.
No, I'm sure it doesn't. But this definitely shows that our goal is not just teaching to the test, that we're really standing and challenging young minds. But I, I am curious on how do the teachers, you know, rearrange from, you know, the way that they used to do it for doing it this way? How?
Yeah, it's about balance. So it's finding that balance. So we know we want kids to be well-prepared for assessments and to do that well. But there's ways to really look at, well, what are the expectations for content? What are kids expected to know and what are they expected to do? And how do you create an assessment that measures that? And you can do that in a very standards-based way, in a very standardized way, or you can do it in a way that's more dynamic. And how do you make sure kids understand their progress towards that as well? So I think it's a little bit of a balancing act. But keeping that, you know, as everyone said, that idea of authenticity a lot as best as possible just makes the learning process so much more dynamic.
It also seems to me that these types of assessments really allow children to explore the way they might be learners and will teach the teachers the way a student might be a learner, which really is something that students can use throughout the rest of their education, no matter where, you know, where or what they're learning. And I'm still trying to figure out what kind of learner I am. And maybe I might have done this kind of work, but have more of a clue right now. And I think it's important to know that because you may be in a setting and you really are being taught in a way that you're not that type of learner, but you can apply some of the skills you pulled out of this kind of assessment you can use in another context for yourself.
Question for the students. Is there any part of the process that you felt like was less effective or impactful than like the traditional way you would do a project or?
We had to do a video. It's a videotape ourselves talking about our topic. And I thought that was, I was pretty like nervous about that. And I felt like, yeah, it was helpful, but I didn't really see the, I just felt like I was kind of repeating myself because I felt like all the stuff that I said was already on the page. I didn't really see that it was necessary for me to.
You didn't see the benefits really?
Yeah.
I, I thought, I kind of saw the benefit of it, but I didn't like taking the video with my face. I, I thought, I kind of saw the benefit of it, but I didn't like taking the video of my face. We know a lot about that. Thinking back on what I looked like back then. I, I don't want to think about it. I don't want to see it on campus.
Permanent school.
The only part of the process you feel like you would have, let's say, removed if you had the opportunity or changed?
Probably not. No regrets. But, um, it's like, you can never kind of erase anything off the internet. So it's probably, it's probably stayed somewhere on there in the depth of you to know. Might as well just not deny it.
I think one of the things that some of the kids struggle with in my class was, um, understanding was more than just painting articles to something. You know, when a kid's, oh, I did an old product. I got it done. So what did you do? I grabbed eight articles, got a couple pictures, put it up there, I'm done, right? So, no, there's more to it. I think one of the things they could struggle with was understanding that even in that social media setting, that you can do critical work on it. You know, they, they are so used to using social media in a way that is, is social, that's the better term, and trying to show them that you could use it.
In a way, it was a topic.
Yeah, and, and use it as a learning tool. I think that there was a little bit of a, of a, of a static there. It's just saying, okay, I have to understand it is an assignment and the assignment is more than just a search and a pin. I have to read the article. I have to think about the article. I have to then comment on it and understand that my comments need to be substantive. It's not just posting a comment like you look great after, don't put a selfie up on Facebook. Um, I think some kids would have preferred a, I have a list of things and here is a topic and now the teacher go and read it. Like I want you to, I want, one of the things we first worried about was, we didn't want the kid to say, I'm going to make the teacher do the teaching of themselves. And they're going to think, I found the articles and that's enough. And that's where the comment section came into play. He said, what's the way to have the kids understand they have to read what they're posting? And I have to make a substantive analysis of the article that provided that. That's where you just say it's more than just posting. I don't know if I answered the question exactly, um, but.
Well, it's not a substitute for deep analysis and the term paper that gets turned around four times and the digging deep and really, you know, deep. This is, this is a little bit more like Facebook thumbs up. So that's their instinct.
Although when I saw them and, you know, as, um, when I saw the longer presentation and got a sense of the work and I'm thinking about what Ariana and Sophia just said, um, there's a different kind of depth because, um, there's an application of understanding that really isn't there with the term paper. You know, a term paper, um, doesn't really require you, um, to commit to it personally. And I, my sense when I watched you was that it, that it does. Two of the key things the district wants to get out of these, you know, to sort of reduce the definition to its minimum, is that it be authentic learning and that it be a performance. So as you were talking, and you know, what I remember from the longer presentation that I saw was bribe burning is something I know nothing about. I'd never heard of it before. But really, they created more than a Facebook page. It's really a learning station. I mean, you could have, you could use that in classes in the future and say to students, this is one of your options for, not for an authentic assessment, but we want you to learn about something unusual in a different culture. Here's a learning station a student created on bribe burning, which, you know, you've never heard of, you could learn all about. And then there's the sense of performance. And, uh, when you were talking and you said, you know, I had to do my best because my classmates were going to read this and I wanted to see, I want them to think I'm not smart. That's like a piano performance. You know, you're worried about your, a meal audience. You weren't just worried about a teacher counting the number of references or all the books done properly, does the paper flow right? Are the topic sentences there a conclusion? Um, so there was a, uh, I think in future presentations, don't compare it to Facebook because I think it, um, it undercuts the work.
And think about the video component, teaching your presentation skills, which no matter what you do in life, it'll come in handy. As painful as it is now, it's easier now than when you're 40.
Synthesizing.
Synthesizing information in a world where all the information's out there just loses its value.
So I have a question for you too. You didn't grow up through the Byron Hill School doing this kind of thing, right? This is fairly new. So was this hard to come into it? Because now some of the younger kids, they're going to be brought up with this. You didn't. You kind of just came into it. So how difficult was it for you to kind of shake your, your, your learning?
At first, I was pretty intimidated by this idea because we've not really done anything like this. But I think once I got starting to, like, once I started to research my topic and started to pick out articles and pictures and certain, certain statistics, I found like it became pretty easy because I was interested in it and I wanted to, I put a lot of effort into it. So I said, like, compared to a test, I thought, even though you had to put more effort in, I thought in the long run, it would be easier.
Wow. I also, um, when Chromebooks were first introduced, I gave again by hand. I was like, no, I don't want to type in class. I want to do everything by hand. That's not how it's supposed to be in school. Everything's by hand. This is what I was taught. But now that I've like adjusted to it and now that more teachers are implementing technology in projects, I, I've learned how to use software. Like YouTube, V-Video and iMovie. I never knew how to use that before, but I had to learn to do a few projects. And then the Google Plus page, I saw it and I was like, ah, I don't want to do this. This seems like really long and intimidating. And like, the work you had to put in was a lot more, but it didn't feel like that. It felt a lot easier to do it because it was broken up into parts. Because when you see this one huge block of like words for like an essay, you kind of get, your brain gets a little muddled when you're trying to look through to see if you're getting all the points that the teachers are going to be grading you on. But when you do this, you can see each part, where you synthesize the information and where you analyze it and where you brought it back to the bigger idea. It's easier to view and it's more like pleasing to the eye.
Ariana, can you talk, we were talking about presentation skills. And you shared something earlier with me about presentation skills and their evolution. Could you share, do you mind sharing that?
Um, well, uh, after the presentation last Wednesday, all of my middle school teachers came up to me and they're like, you're talking now. And they're like, I'm so surprised. I'm so proud of you. And I was like, yeah. I just look back a few years ago, not even a few years, but last year, until halfway through the year, I didn't open my mouth in class. I couldn't even like fathom doing it in freshman year in eighth grade. If thinking about doing something like this, I probably would have started crying, having a panic attack, you know? But, um, I was told that like, you're always going to have to present in your life. There's nothing you can do to stop it. And you're always going to have to put yourself out, out there, talk to people. Otherwise, you're not going to get the connections you need to go play in your life. So I decided, I'm going to raise my hand in class today. And I started doing it more and more often. And even though the video, I hated it, it like helped me because I knew that I was going to have to develop my speech skills. And that was only on a video. Doing a speech in front of a class was so daunting to me. But now my skills have developed vastly and I'm able to just speak freely in front of people.
One of the things, you know, that that, that brings out about the elementary project and, um, it's a lot easier to articulate in high school for all of us who are not used to being around elementary. But what you just talked about was a kind of learning that you don't get from a term paper A, but that we don't think about very often, which is practicing skills and practicing behaviors. And that was exactly what you were talking about doing with these, these elementary kids at a very low level. They were learning behavior. And then when they came back from the playground and said, somebody did that to me on the playground, they were practicing a behavior. And you know, that's a kind of learning that was totally absent from complete abstract traditional classroom.
And the whole concept of, yeah, teaching them character and patience and the importance of community service, it's amazing. And to start, in Wampus and at the middle school and high school, you have opportunities to do it extraterrestrially. But here now, you start planting the seed in the classroom. It's, I think it makes a difference. It really does.
Makes a difference for the culture in the classroom too. The kids seem to be more invested in one another and, you know, they're using their everyday language where they're saying, that's positive. It's different from the other. That's not the nicest thing for me, you know? But they're using it and internalizing it. And then they feel bonded with one another. Well, I have less behavioral issues than you're not. And, um, because we are constantly talking about it. It's not a one isolated discussion.
And it has benefits at home because they had to do acts of kindness at home and then bring them in.
More homework like that.
I really do, like, we've seen, you know, going back, uh, you know, 10, 15 years, an evolution in behavior, in students, in higher levels in general. I mean, I remember when it was fights in the hallway was the thing we worry about. And I'm not, I'm sure that happens from time to time. But the, the behavior as a whole, uh, has evolved in a very positive way. The district, it is a K-12 nation. I've heard high school kids say, talk it out, man. Away from the bribe. And so, yeah, okay, so, sure.
We still have pictures of him on the bus.
Yeah. So, you know, it really does make a difference, all of that incrementally. But it does make a difference.
And Robyn, you had just mentioned before about other teachers and how, how they deal with this and how will they deal with this? But, um, Tim will have the answer for that. But I just, when we presented at our faculty meeting the other day, there were several teachers who came up to me and I think probably Lily and Nicole too afterwards and said, wow, you know, um, that project made an impact on me. And I'm going to go back to my classroom and I think it's really important that we create this culture that we make a difference in other people's lives. And we teach respect in the classroom and outside of the classroom. And then another teacher said to me, did you know that, um, the new New York State Social Studies curriculum in first grade is global citizenship? And so she started, she made this connection with that for me. And then I wrote that to Lily and Nicole. And so, you know, then that teacher who told me that is involved in that. And so I feel like there's kind of like this grassroots. And so, um, and then there are other cohorts of teachers who are being trained in PATTI. And so I might talk to one of them and say, you know what? We're doing this other work. How can what we learned in PATTI be brought into that? So there's this, this kind of grassroots movement happening.
I see a shift in our thinking about what Giselle, Giselle is our consultant who's been training us in this work. And it's her particular framework we're using. She talks about worthy outcomes. What are the worthy outcomes and how do we measure them? They're hearing these examples now, refining ways. How do we measure students' care? How do we, you know, if that is something we can really value, that we want students to care.
Not with a number two pencil in the lap.
I think that's on the state test. We don't have that indicator yet. But, you know, these are the things that we're grappling with and that the teachers are starting to talk about, how we measure it. How do we listen to students talk about the passion in their subject? You know, six months later, we still recall what they did, experience they had. And that's what we're seeking in this.
Just going back to what I said, one of the challenges for me was my, helping to take the mind, changing my mindset that assessment doesn't score if you learn it. And so I keep reading, how can assessment be learning? How the learning happened and now we're assessing it? So you're actually still learning through the assessment and that's a big difference to me.
Wow.
So I'm curious, if, if you could talk a little more about that idea, sort of this mind shift in terms of how you view assessments differently from engaging in this work.
Well, if you think about when you get that score on the test, the learning stops. Right? So then what? I mean, what's that, then where do you go from there? So when you, when you get that feedback, then your learning continues. So that for me was a takeaway from the performance assessment design, was that idea of when you get the test, the learning stops. So what's the point of that? And there are times when some of the assessment is important. Um, but in this work, it makes you really think it out. And I was listening to, I am so busy for, when they have such control over their learning, how much they've taken away from this is so much more than what they would have taken away when they didn't have control of their learning.
I was just going to say, you know, our goal as teachers is to foster lifelong learning. And, you know, you don't want students to leave your classroom and say, that's it. It's done. I never have to think about it again. You know, I want to foster lifelong learning. I want to foster students who are going to be informed citizens, who are going to be able to participate in society in a meaningful way. And if all we do is measure for a test and say, that's all you need to know and that scores all that matters, you're not fostering true learning or love of learning. You're fostering chasing that carrot, you know? And the performance assessment, it teaches them to love learning for the sake of what they're getting out of it. They internalize it.
Yeah, just to piggyback, I think good learning takes question process. You know, maybe more than the product itself. Um, and just all your questions, I'm sitting here thinking about the irony of, of our such a question of traditional modernization, you know, how we're sort of pushing the paradigm, you know, in, in teaching, you know, from a traditional maybe, you know, teaching perspective and assessment to maybe what could be, you know, in the future. So I thought that was something to say. Answer those questions.
We get a grade.
That's.
We'll let you know next meeting.
Okay.
A, a few of us, uh, heard our Regent last week talk about teaching, the evolution of teaching. And she said that what worked through the eighties didn't work in the nineties. What worked in the nineties doesn't work in the hundreds. And then it's really, she doesn't like to speak in terms of reform. She likes to speak in terms of continuous improvement, which, you know, like, well, that sounds like Jackie Taylor in, you know, Byron Hills. And it really, I, I want to just, uh, thank the superintendent, Tim, and all the other administrators who have sort of, uh, enabled this too because it's, it's, the teachers are really taking this and running with it in a terrific way. But without the culture of the district to sort of allow this dynamic evolution of teaching, you know, your jobs wouldn't be at this fun if you did the same thing that you've done in years past, you know, you're growing and learning as teachers too. That's, I'm sure engages everybody.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's great.
Thanks. And I just want to thank all of you for your work. I want to thank Ariana and Sophia for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
The word you have in your, in the presentation for the high school, the two links to their Google Plus community, you can go explore that.
We still look at it?
It's a look. It's a look. Take it in your life.
Is that done?
It's a look for boy.
I remember it was like the middle of the summer and like, you know, the teachers, how did they not? I was like, oh my god.
We're born in the summer, so we have time. All the volunteers were ready. Thank you so much. It was really great for Ariana.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We're having you.